This conference will now be recorded.
So I'll send her the login information, but go ahead.
Thank you. So hello, everyone. Today is August 12th, 2020, and this is the Board of Commissioners' work session. It is 5:02. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and to listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings, which today will follow this one at 6 o'clock. So let's begin with the Board communication. And I see Commissioner Nebiker is online. So Commissioner Nebiker, would you like to start?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Sullivan. First, I wanted to thank our county manager for his update of what he's been up to and commend him for his good writing and what he said about his philosophy of management. And I think we are extremely fortunate to have him, and I did share this with him in a phone conference, but I wanted to share that publicly as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Do we have Commissioner Webb on the line yet? Okay, so Commissioner Thompson is excused from our meetings today if she has an important community event that she's involved with. And if she's able to join us later, she will, but she, I don't believe, will be on for a work session for sure. And Commissioner Quila is away with his family. So they're both of them are excused. And I see Commissioner Webb is on the call. Commissioner Webb, would you like to check in with Board Communication? Commissioner Webb? Okay, well, we will come back to her. One thing that I would like, oh, there she is. Commissioner Webb, would you like to say hello? No, she's just waving. That's okay. And I don't have a lot to say at this point either. So let's move into the discussion, the formal agenda. Does anyone have any comments about the agenda that's in front of us? I have a couple of questions. If no one else does, Serpa, stand by. You're going to be on the hot seat. I have a little question about, and maybe someone else can answer it also, the transfer of the property for the Girl Scouts, and then the transfer of the, and there's two of them there. And can someone explain why they're, like, one, we're doing a quick deed, and once, is it one to unhook and one to hook up? I mean, how does that work? We're not hearing you yet, Serpa.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
They are both quitclaim deeds. It was originally one tax lot. The northern portion was leased to Girl Scouts. And the southern portion, only the building was leased to Sunset Empire Parks and Rec. We did a survey, and the survey allows us to, because it is two separate lots in one block, it allows us to do two different deeds, one for the southern half and one for the northern half. I'm not sure if that is what you're asking, but...
No, that's a great, that's a big help. So, once we do the quick deeds, both of those lots will then be turned over to the Sunset Parks and Recreation District, correct?
No. The southern, partially. The southern half will be deeded to the Sunset Empire Parks and Recreation District, and the northern half will be deeded to the Girl Scouts of Oregon and Southwest Washington.
Okay, that's, I, for some reason in my mind, the Girl Scout Mary Blake Playhouse was part of that. But that's not, okay.
Well, in a sense, you are correct, because they are both currently on the same tax lot. It is now one long north and south tax lot, but it will get divided up into half with these two deeds.
Okay, I guess my question is, when I was going through this, is, I don't have a problem with any of these items being on the consent calendar, but there's some awful good work that's been done on these, and I was just kind of excited. And so I guess I will just say something individually at our Commissioner comments. But I'm excited about this, what this is going to mean for the Girl Scouts organization. And I'm always happy to give a shout out to Mary Blake, and such a longtime, such a positive community leader. And I, so I just was excited about that. So those are my questions for the agenda. Does anybody else have any questions upon the agenda? Okay, so let's, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Webb.
Well, I have a question about the partition. I mean, is, doesn't this, if we redefine this one tax lot into two, that requires a process of partitioning, doesn't it? We can't just do it with a big plan B.
They're originally part of a subdivision, and they, each lot individually were already lots of record.
Oh, okay.
There's two lots in one tax lot. So we are just now going back into the original one tax lot for each one. So we are not creating any illegal land use lot of records.
Well, we don't want illegal land use lot, you're correct, Serpa.
No, we don't. So according to the county surveyor, this is all done properly.
Okay. How about our attorney? How does she feel about that?
She also doesn't want anything illegal. I saw her shaking her head on that one.
Okay.
If the surveyor says it's an illegal lot of record, I think we can rely on the survey.
Okay.
And, Serpa, I just want to congratulate you and the folks that were working with you on this. I'm really happy about that. So, thank you.
We are touched.
Good, very good. Anyone else? Okay, so let's move now into, we have topics today. We are going to do public health update, about five minutes. We have, we're going to be introduced to the new Veteran Service Officer. And that's on page three, and we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan update for about 10 minutes, and the planning commission for about 10 minutes. Well, let's start with the public health update, and who will be giving that update for us today?
This is Mike. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes. So Dr. McNichol, our Public Health Director. Go ahead.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, and all of our guests. I wanted to give you a brief update. We still have, we have community spread of COVID, as we've known all along. We have 88 cases as of today. We're still monitoring the COVID cases as they come in and doing the contact tracing of those that are still under, needing to have contact tracing. 66 of the 88 have recovered. So we're still monitoring 22, and a bunch of them will drop off in the next week. We're working hard with our schools. As you know, the school system is concerned about the opening of school, which is about four weeks away now. And we've been meeting with them twice a week to try to work on their plans that are required to be turned in by the 15th. We're pretty confident that the schools have done the best that they can and to address. New guidelines that come out almost weekly from the Oregon Department of Education. Right now, as it stands, if we have 12 or more cases during a week, which runs from Sunday to Saturday, then we will have to close. But right now, they would have to close, but right now, it looks like, based on what we have so far, that the schools are going to choose between what Astoria is doing, which is going to be online, and maybe some cohorting, all the way to Jewel School, because it's rural, may be going to in-person. So right now, the goal is to make sure the health and safety of all the community, of staff, faculty, and kids are safe. So we're going to be doing some, using the data to make sure that we're safe as soon as the school gets started, and we'll work closely with our school nurses and the administration to give them the best data we can. And that's about my update right now.
Thank you, Dr. McNichol. I know there's a lot of conversation about if schools are going to open or not. There's, as you said, the guidance seems to be evolving and changing. And as part of that, what could be seen as uncertainty is that Governor Brown would like to have enough flexibility that if small schools are able to open, that they be given guidance to do that in case a larger school may not be able to do that. It leaves some flexibility in the system. Is that what they're planning, trying to do?
I think that's the goal, yeah. For those smaller systems that have, as they call it, their catchment area is rural, and they aren't seeing the cases like we do in some of the more suburban urban areas, they're giving that flexibility through the Oregon Department of Education to get that, variances done, so they can do that. I think that Jewel is definitely going to take advantage of that. I'm not so sure about Napple.
And how are you doing with your department? You have so many demands on you and your staff's time, and you're doing such a great job. Is there anything that the Board can help you with? Is there any needs that you have that we could address?
Oh, I appreciate that. But you know, we're, I think we've had, you know, I've made, I've asked some of my staff made, you know, voluntold, some of the staff to take some time off to try to recharge their batteries. And I think that, you know, with the nice weather, being able to get out and go to the beach and social distance and wear a mask, I think I'm seeing staff actually bouncing back now. And we're getting ready for the next challenge, which will be, once a vaccine has been approved and developed and improved and safe for use, that's going to be the next challenge. So we're just thinking about getting ahead of that curve as well. So we're on a trajectory to see when we do have vaccine that we can actually do that well. But I think we're doing great, and I really appreciate the letter that was sent into the paper the other day. That was, that was great to show that our, some of our businesses are working well with us. I really appreciate that.
Oh, absolutely. And we appreciate you and all your staff, all the work that you all are doing. So thank you very much for keeping our community safe.
We're doing well.
Yeah. It's a difficult time. So, any other comments? Okay, so thank you very much, Dr. McNichol.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, you too. Let's move now into the introduction of the new Veteran Services Officer. And we have about 10 minutes for this, and this is on page three of your agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is Monica Steele, Assistant County Manager. And as you're all aware, a few months back, we went through the process of going out for an RFP for someone to provide veteran services for the county. And we ended up selecting Clasip Community Action as the agency to provide those services. And then Clasip Community Action immediately went into the role of doing the the search for the Veteran Service Officer themselves. And through that process, they've hired a gentleman by the name of, and I hope I say your name correctly, Stephen, but Stephen Bobian. And he comes to us as a Veteran Service Officer from Jackson County. So he is experienced in this line of work. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Viviana Matthews, the Executive Director for Clasip Community Action, to introduce Stephen himself.
If I may interrupt for a moment, I see a VSO, and I see a happy young person there. If the new Veterans Service Person could raise their hand, so those of us can take a look at you. So, thank you. Okay. Viviana, is the photo yours?
I'm ready. Yes, thank you.
You can wave too, Viviana.
Yeah, there you go. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners, City Manager and staff. I'm Viviana Matthews, the Executive Director at Clasip Community Action. And we are very excited to have the Veteran Service Officer here, working under the umbrella of Clasip Community Action, even though the Veteran Service Officers, it's an employee of Clasip Community Action, the Veteran Service Officer's office will not be located 100% of the time at the CCA office. We'll be doing outreach in Astoria, Seaside, Warranton, and all the other places in Clasip County. And I would like to introduce Stephen Bobian. We are very excited to have him here on board. And he has stepped up and started running already. So thank you. Go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you.
How are you guys doing today? Thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Really glad to be here. A little bit about myself, I was originally from, I was born in Hawaii. Joined the Coast Guard directly after high school. Was in for about eight years. Went to, I was a brewer at a booey beer company for about three years while I was going to the Merck's School over here in Clasip May College. And I kind of fell into this work a little randomly, but I absolutely fell in love with it. And I'm just really happy to be out of the heat of Southern Oregon, for one, the Valley, and here to start promoting and community connection and essentially just synergy throughout all of our, like, business partners, I should say. But thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for him, or?
I do want to add that having Stephen being a VSO, Veteran Service Officer, in a different county has helped us tremendously. We have received over, I'd say about 30 different applications from applicants all over the state. So it was a very high competition to select a Veteran Service Officer. And it took us a little bit, but we thought that Stephen was the best match for the position under CCA. As I mentioned before, Stephen will be doing a lot of outreach. He will be at the college, the main office will be at the college. He is right now at the CCA office because of COVID upstairs on the second floor. We do have a separate door, a separate phone number, but we want to make sure that there is going to be a coordination between the Veteran Services Officer and Clasip Community Action Services. We want to make sure all veterans will be seen by, who need assistance, by Stephen to provide the veterans assistance, as well as social service agency, if they choose to, if they need to. So some veterans might need housing, transportation. Some of them might need, be connected with food and information and referral, other than Veteran Services too.
Thank you. And is there a link, or will there be a link on the county website to Stephen and Clasip Community Action? A phone number or link or something? Sorry, I'm stupid.
Yes, that information is supposed to...
Sorry.
Yeah, and he has its own separate phone number, or, you know, it's on email too. So we are going to be working on outreach. We already started working on outreach. And as I mentioned before, Stephen just came on board and running. Do you want to add, you know, to, do you want to add anything else, Stephen?
I look forward to being able to conduct more outreach when, you know, there's less of a risk of COVID. But planning wise, I've already started planning for, you know, the parts of Seaside and the college. But that's as far as I've gotten as far as outreach. But been conducting appointments, and we've been really busy. So I really enjoy it here. But thank you again for having me.
Well, I want to say congratulations for getting the position. You had a very impressive resume, and welcome to Clasip County. Back, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Viviana. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely.
Likewise.
Oh, you bet. Okay, so let's, thank you so much. And we are moving on to the comprehensive plan update. This is on page seven of your agenda. You're packing, I'm sorry. And we have about 10 minutes for this. So our Community Development Director, Gail Hendrickson, will you be carrying this one?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. And the last time I spoke to you about this topic was March 11th. And we were still joking a little bit about COVID, and not sure where we were going to end up. A week later, the county had passed their emergency ordinance, and most of the planning staff was already beginning to work remotely. So we've had to make a lot of adjustments to this process as we've moved along. We took off, we had planned to take off January, February, and March of this year just to give staff time to prepare some draft rewrites of Goals 1 through 4. We have also put together a story map, which you will be seeing here. This is on the county's website, and that was prepared by Ian Sisson, one of our planners. And he put together this informational piece, and it had some questions on it about each of the goals. And we've been seeking some input from the public on this. To date, we've had 10 responses as of 4 o'clock this afternoon. So anything we can do to help promote the questionnaire and get that word out that this is up and open for public comment would be greatly appreciated. Going back, we had anticipated starting the process back up in April of this year, and obviously, that didn't work out. We have started again back in June. We did an initial check-in with our Citizen Advisory Committee members just to see, first of all, if there was the technology available, how it was working for the members, but also just to kind of see where they were at in their lives, how they felt about picking up the process again. And everybody was in agreement that they were willing and able to start, you know, reviewing the comprehensive plan again. And we did start regular meetings then formally in July. And so we'll be entering our second month of regular meetings. We're in the middle of discussing Goal 5, which is a very thick and meaty goal, very complex. It covers everything from natural resources, open spaces, historic resources, coastal, wildlife habitat, and about 10 other items that are required to be reviewed. So we anticipate that this is going to take several months as we move forward. In the meantime, as I stated, staff had prepared some draft revisions, very preliminary draft revisions, based on committee member comment and public input that we received. And we did those draft rewrites and sent them to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And we have gotten comments back on Goals 1, 3, and 4 from DLCD. Those drafts are posted on the county's website, and we've received some public comment back from them. I noted that today, you received some comment from Mike Liasson, who's the General Counsel and Director of Government Affairs for the Oregon Forestry and Industries Council. I know that I also spoke with Judd Arnold today, and he had expressed an interest if the Board was willing. He also had some comments he wanted to share as well. So I'm just passing that along to you for your consideration. As we proceed, we obviously had to extend our deadline and our timeframes. So tentatively, we are looking at moving that completion date out to December of 2022, which would be about a six-month delay at this point. I really want to stress that that needs to be a very flexible deadline, just because we don't know, first of all, what will happen with the pandemic, what will happen with other local, state, or federal events that may occur over the next few months. And so we do want to make sure that we keep the opportunity available to gather the most public input that we can and to keep our schedule flexible as much as we can, just because it's a very uncertain time. And then, one other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is, as we have moved forward, we've had six resignations from the Citizen Advisory Committees. Four of them were in the Elsie Jewel Seaside Rural Committee, Planning Area Committee, and that left their membership down to three. So we want to give people the rest of the unofficial summer to just enjoy their time. And, but after Labor Day, we do want to put out another call for applicants, especially in that Elsie Jewel Seaside Rural area. And that concludes my report. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Gail. Do the Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Nebiker?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Gail, this is wonderful work. I've read through it. I've enjoyed reading all of the thoughts and considerations. And I, I'm really happy with it.
Thank you. It's really been a very much a whole planning staff process and a great learning experience for all of us. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, Gail, I'd like to second that. I'm so impressed with, first of all, with the amount of work that your staff did in early 2020 to get this all going. And I really, I have also asked the county manager if he can make sure that perhaps at the end of every goal, you can come to the Board, so that we're kind of going along with you, you know, as the system progresses. I think that in virtually every goal, and my experience is that even the goals that you don't think are going to be controversial, sometimes are. So it would be really nice for us to be, to be better informed as you move along. I'm really sorry about the, sorry word, that, well, that we've had so many resignations from the, from the community advisory committees. But at the same time, I'm also really pleased that somebody decided that in the Clasip Plains, it would be a really good idea to bring someone from the Chinook Nation in. And I think that's been a wonderful addition to that group. So it seems to me that with our advisory committees, gosh, we could almost have a continuous flow of people, since we know that we're going to lose people. And, you know, some of them were health reasons, et cetera. But if there's anything that the Board can do to help you with those, I mean, you know, we kind of know our areas. So maybe we could help with recruiting and just get, you know, to get more people at the table. And then, I really think that it would be very helpful to come to the Board at the end of each goal and give us a full briefing on the progress. But, but, good job, good job. And I, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Is that, is that, I'm sorry, you finished, or?
No.
Okay. I have several comments. One, I've enjoyed listening into the, for me, it works out to have the virtual meetings on this. I know it's not optimal, but I can, I can listen in as a Commissioner to the committee meetings and learn a lot. The presentation you had the last week on Goal 5, that was very informative for me. And I, and I'm, am I wrong to think that this is kind of like a dance in that you dance to one side of the floor, you pick up a few tips, and then you go over here, and it's going to be a lot of back and forth and twirling around. And so even if you were to come to us at the end of each goal, the whole thing is not going to be complete until it's all complete. Is that correct? Or am I wrong on that?
No, that's correct, especially with Goal 5, as I said, because it covers so many topics that intertwine and overlap. And there's just so much information to take in and process that that definitely will be a dance.
And I'm also wondering, we have, I'm looking at several faces from the Planning Commission, and we've got some dedicated and interested people in planning. And in what way are we using the resources of the Planning Commission in this process?
So at this point, we have not brought or really done a formal presentation or involvement with the Planning Commission, as they will be reviewing all this material at the end of the process as well. But like we will be doing with the Board, we can begin, we do give them a monthly update of just generally where we're at. But we can begin to give them a post-goal, post-mortem, so to speak, as well, since we'll be preparing it for the Board.
Are they, are they able to, I mean, as, because we are... Are they, are they able to, I mean, as, as, because we are, because there is so much work involved, and it is a volunteer thing, are there ways that we could also discuss other ways to encourage people to be involved? And I, I, I still would like to have the Planning Commission be interactive in the, in this way, but I don't know all the, all the rules between that, so maybe we can continue talking about that as the process goes on. But I think they're dedicated and interested in, in planning and have experience, a lot of them have experience. So I guess I'm, I'm going around, I'm going around in my own circle. So Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I, I'd like to kind of second that. I actually think it's the responsibility of the Planning Commission members to be involved in this process, because there's so much of an education process that is, so, so to me, to go into our, what, two more years and then take it to the Planning Commission to, for their decision-making?
Commissioner Webb, I don't, I don't know if she's saying that. You're not, you're not saying wait till two years, are you, Gail?
No, but what we would like to do is, later this year, probably October, hold some virtual public open houses where we can open up the goals one through four again for more public comment. And I think after that point, and we do a rewrite, and then we take it back one more time to the committees, and then take it to the Planning Commission for some additional review. There will be a lot of back and forth and discussion between the different committees as we go through this, and it's not just a one-shot deal for any, any, any of the entities involved.
And that includes the state buildings, right?
I'd always like to educate the Planning Commission.
I guess I have another question, a technical question in this time of COVID. I know that what I have read about the comprehensive plan is, has been from staff reports to me and the material that you hand out, but in other, in what way is, because I'm not, I'm confused a little bit. So if someone makes, wants to make a comment, does that, does that land someplace where other people can read what other people's comments are?
So at this point, what we have posted on the website are the comments from Department of Land Conservation and Development. We've gotten some comments back from the committee members and some comments back from the public, probably about four different sets of comments. Those have not yet been posted on the website. I would have to give some thought about how we can do it in an interactive type of format where people could comment on others' comments, and that I have not looked at.
And I know, I know it would be labor-intensive. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just asking because, you know, we want appropriate comments. We don't, we don't want, we don't want trolling of this, but we do want a community conversation. So perhaps the open house, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, so. Okay, any other, any other comments? Okay, Gail, did, do you have any, any, anything else that you wanted to say? Okay, so I think we're at the end of our, our work session, and we have, it is now 5:36, so we have about 20 minutes until, oh, no, we don't, I'm sorry, we're now moving, that's why we have more time. We are now moving into the Planning Commission update, good grief. And this is page 90, and this will, we have about 10 minutes for this, and who will be giving this report?
Okay, that will be me again, Gail Hemmerson.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
Yes, you're welcome. So the Planning Commission has put together a series of prioritized worklist topics that they wanted to tackle when they had opportunities during meetings when there were no publicly-scheduled, scheduled public hearings. And they did this back in 2019. And recently, we had the opportunity to work with them on a particular topic related to affordable housing. And when the Planning Commission put together their work program back February to April of 2019, it was really based on the recommendations coming out of the Affordable Housing Study that the counties and the cities had just completed in January of that year. So the Planning Commission, real understanding that circumstances have changed due to, due to the pandemic and the resulting economic crisis that we're in right now, really looked at the topic again with a different perspective, looking at it from what may or may not happen if there are forced evictions, when the eviction moratorium that the state has in place right now should expire. Right now, that moratorium is in place until September 30th of this year, and then there's a grace period until March 31st, 2021, that renters have to pay their back rent and avoid eviction procedures. So the COVID-19 Eviction Defense Project is a national organization that has estimated that one in five renter households are possibly at risk for eviction. And what that would equate to in Klatsa County is just over 1,200 housing or households and approximately 2,800 potential residents who could theoretically be without housing over the next six to nine months, depending on how circumstances play out. So the committee or the Planning Commission put together a list of recommendations for the board to consider and to give them direction back as to how the board would like the Planning Commission to proceed on those topics. So those recommendations begin on page 104 of your agenda package, and they consist of two sets of items, a short-term list that could be done relatively quickly, and then a longer-term list that the Planning Commission would also be interested in working on. On the short-term list, they put together five items, which include an education campaign just to inform people about different legal options they have to provide accessory units or housing units or accessory rooms, things like renting out a room to someone who may need a space because they've lost their home. The second item had to do with promoting the construction of accessory dwelling units or ADUs in areas where they're already allowed, and then looking at revisions to the code to allow ADUs in other zoning districts. The third item had to do with a review of the short-term rental regulations, including looking at limiting rentals in certain zones, or perhaps limiting the total number of short-term rental units allowed in the county overall, unincorporated area. And I know that the board currently has work sessions scheduled on the short-term rental housing topic, September 1st and September 9th, so that will also be coming back for further discussion. The fourth short-term item that the Planning Commission recommended the board consider would be to encourage cities and homelessness or houselessness organizations, such as churches or other nonprofits, to explore some sort of centralized camping facility that could provide services, but also a safe area for people who may need to be temporarily housed in RVs or other types of temporary units. And then the final short-term recommendation that the Planning Commission had related to use of the soon-to-be-old jail downtown as used for some sort of shelter and supporting services that could be used, at least temporarily, to house people who may become houseless over, because of the pandemic. And then in terms of longer-term projects, the board would like some direction on would be to revise zoning codes to allow additional housing in commercial areas, to look at revising the zoning codes to allow commercial clusters and, or not, commercial clusters, sorry, cottage clusters within certain zoning districts, and then also providing some incentives and code revisions to address the missing middle housing that has been the topic of much discussion over the past couple of years. So again, those recommendations are all found beginning on page 104 of your agenda package. And what we're asking from the board tonight is some direction as to how you would like the Planning Commission to proceed in their efforts, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gail. I'll start with, do any commissioners have comments? Okay, I, I have one, and we have, and maybe I'm, I'm missing it here. We have the short-term rentals. Do we have a category of long-term rentals? As a lifelong renter, I like the idea of encouraging long-term rentals. Did I miss that category?
So long-term rental is really, it, I'm probably not going to use the correct legal term, but this is how I would explain it, is it's basically a form of ownership that you have. So I can own a property, I can choose to rent it out long-term, and there's really no difference as to whether I live there or my tenant lives there. And Joanna may want to add to that, but really, if, if you can have a single-family home or a multifamily home or a duplex, it doesn't matter if it's owner occupied or long-term renter occupied, it's the same, same issue. You can't differentiate between the two. Short-term rentals are different, though.
Right now, right now, as we know, we've had many conversations about this. The pressure of, on, on rental and affordable housing in a beautiful area that we live in that is so attractive to short-term visitors and tourism, is there a way that we can beef up incentives to hold properties for, to, for rentals rather than short-term rentals? Is that, how, is there a ways that we can do that? Is that one of the things that they're talking about?
So I don't know that it was necessarily an incentive program that the Planning Commission was considering. I think what we, they had discussed was perhaps limiting or prohibiting short-term rentals in certain residential zoning districts. And, yeah, I'm just going to leave it at that. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
It, it, it does. I, 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 I feel like this is a looming, this is, it's not just a looming problem, it's a current problem, and it's a complex problem. And I, and I think we're going to have to continue to have ongoing discussions with it. I, I don't have any, anything specific right now, I'm mostly just taking in what was given to us. I see, Commissioner Nebiker, do you have your hand up? Go ahead.
So, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. My, I just got a little window pop-up saying that my speed might be slowing. Has there been any consideration about the, I, I don't know what the inventory is for short-term rentals in the county. I think most of them are in the south. And I, I just know, talking to people who have short-term rentals, I've spoken to maybe, I don't know, 10, 12 people, what they have said is, they don't see them renting them out full-time if there are restrictions. What they see is that they will put them up for sale. So I, because some of these places are so expensive and nice, that that's how they're paying for them with the short term, they're making more money and still able to use it with their family. I, I just wonder if this is a real fix for creating more long-term rentals, if this is a solution, and has that been looked at?
So the Affordable Housing Study that was completed in January of 2019 did identify short-term rentals as one possible obstacle to the provision of affordable housing, yes.
Because there, I, I think what they also found in the, in the housing study was that we currently have a lot of housing stock. It's, it's what the housing stock is being used for, and that's, that's part of the problem. And I understand in, in some communities that the house was originally bought for, in mind that they were going to rent out short-term rentals, but I think the crisis that we all are facing is a national crisis. We, we are going to have to encourage as much creative thought as we can. I was told that there was some communities that they may have a lottery system, that when, when the house is sold, the, the permit to have a short-term rental on their property goes into a lottery system. I mean, I think there's, there's, we don't have to, we don't have to come up with all the solutions, but, because there are some out there that I think we could look at. I know the Tillamook Housing Study, before we did our housing study, they had restricted mortgages that, that keep housing within a certain range. And I think that we, we could look at, look at what incentive programs there are out there and, and, and see if any of those incentive programs would work for our, our county. And then there's, I mean, it's so complicated, like with farmland, having dwellings on farmland, that increases the income to the farmland, that increases the, the farm property costs, does that, does that discourage farming from happening? So, I mean, it's just, just a wide range of, of prob, of situations. And that, I, I think that the Planning Commission's, I think it was at 20, page 23, 24, in addition to what you put out, Gail, I just think there's very thoughtful suggestions on there, and I guess I'm supposed to, oh, boy. I don't know, I don't have any answers right now, I have to keep thinking about it. But I do think that we have to find ways to encourage long-term renting. That, the, from what I understand nationwide, there are more and more renters rather than homeowners because housing has gotten so expensive. When I lived in Minnesota, there was, and this is on a legislative level, renters could have a tax credit for rentals. I mean, I, I don't know, they're just, I, I'm sorry, I don't have, I, I'll call on Commissioner Webb, do you have her hand up?
First of all, I'm, I'm really impressed with the, with the Planning Commission's tackling this, and I think their recommendations are fairly significant, and, and they've done good work in preparing them for us. My complaint to the county manager when we were talking about, about the agenda was, I'd love, I, I think this is an immediate crisis. And incidentally, I also commented to the county manager about how impressed I was that at least one of our departments was really thinking heavily about, you know, what's going to happen with COVID in the next six or eight months. And I, I think we need to be pretty aggressive in sitting down, I don't know, maybe a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and go over these suggestions that they have made, and, and have somebody be able to come up with an agenda and a timeframe to say, thank you, this is good work, you've asked for our opinion. I, I think we need to give them back our opinion. There are, there are many things that can legally be done to, to take care of short-term rentals. And I think, you know, I think virtually all of our cities have done something already. Um, I, county manager, I requested from the Assessment and Taxation Office a few weeks ago, an accounting of where short-term rentals were in the county, and I think how, I can't, I couldn't put my finger on it, but, so they have done that. I think it's Alicia on Suzanne's staff, and, and it's a very interesting thing to take a look at, because it's, it, it puts in front of us what some of the issues are.
Commissioner Webb, if I, I'm, go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's all right.
I, I just, I just wanted to say that I agree with you that, that it is the, the board's role to give more input, and probably today with our and probably today with our work session, a 10-minute overview is not enough. And so, I agree with you that perhaps we can set up some meetings that go more in-depth. But I, I wanted to say, and I think you've said it, but the planning department, community planning department has, has really done so much work. And I think that the housing issue, the community as a whole, and the county as a whole, has been wrestling with this issue. It's just that you can only wrestle with one alligator at a time sometimes. And so, I would, I would agree with you. Let's have another informal work session, and perhaps we can invite, if there's time, we can find out who would be most appropriate to be in that meeting, and we can talk about it some more. But we also have to be careful because during this time of COVID, there's so much work being done on so many levels that we have to use our time and our suggestions efficiently. This is not a problem that's going to be solved overnight, but we've got some great people working on it. So, and I see county manager's green light on there. Did you want to add something to the conversation, county manager?
Chair Sullivan, members of the board. I would just say that staff can get together, and we can talk about next steps, and then discuss that with your board as we meet weekly and have a longer work session where we can talk about that in some more detail. I will say, though, that there's a lot of work going into rental assistance, which is kind of some of the work that is trying to actually prevent some of those folks from having a crisis at the end of the moratorium. And the Community Action Agency is the one that is the conduit for that. And they've received over a half a million dollars for that purpose and have been serving hundreds of folks in the community. And they've been working actively with, with the property managers and the property owners to identify folks who might be struggling so that we can outreach to them. So, there's a lot of cooperation, collaboration that has been happening at that level because at this point, that is the most important thing because of the timing issue, is to try to prevent folks from, from having that financial cliff at the end of the moratorium. And so, the anticipation right now is there'll be another large grant to continue this program after January 1st. So, there's a lot of effort going into that, but I think these are all important issues, no matter what. On the positive side, we have seen a couple of approved and one that is in construction now of low-income projects that will be adding about, you know, 85 units just on their own over the next year and a half to two years. So, you know, obviously, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And this will also be a topic of the strategic plan as we move forward. So, a lot of energy going in into it, but let staff discuss next steps, and then we will come back to you. But that will lead to another work session, which will set aside a longer timeframe for. Thank you.
Thank you, county manager. I see that we are coming up to just a few minutes before our next meeting. So, I would like to take a little break right now, and I suggest that you just shut off your camera and microphone, and we'll see y'all back here at 6 o'clock. The work session has been adjourned. Thank you. Boy, I don't know how you guys feel, but I feel very refreshed. Are we ready for our next meeting? Uh-oh, it's been piled, it's been lost under the pile. Oh, dear. Oh, dear. Oh, dear. I had everything organized. Just a minute, you guys, I apologize. I lost my... Oh, good. Here we go. Are we ready, county clerk, to start up?
I am ready.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. This is August 12, 2020, and welcome to the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. This is a regular session. It is 6:01. I would welcome everyone, but I would first like to ask everyone to mute their phone or computer until they are called on. The Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, and as a Clatsop County Local Contract Board, is now in regular session. County clerk, may we, clerk of the board, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Nebiker.
Let's move on to Commissioner Webb right now.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
And Commissioner Sullivan is here.
Yes.
Do we have?
Commissioner Thompson are excused. So, we'll need to wait for Commissioner Nebiker to have a quorum.
Okay. So, there's Commissioner Nebiker.
Okay.
So, we have three commissioners present, and that is a quorum. Commissioner Nebiker, Commissioner Webb, and Commissioner Sullivan. So, let's go to the agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Nebiker, thank you. A second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the agenda's been approved unanimously. So, business from the public. This is the next section of our meeting. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the board, are there any written comments that were sent in from the public?
Yes.
Okay, and if you could help us with those now?
Yes. The first one is from Tom Clark. "As a tax-paying and property-owning citizen of Clatsop County, I am very concerned with the fitness of the citizens' advisory committee members to draft policy that is legal-appropriate and supports the variety of viewpoints present within Clatsop County. If approved, the draft goal for would certainly generate lawsuit from both private landowners and from the state. Have the citizen advisory committee meetings been attended by county legal counsel? It seems the committee is attempting to trample on private landowner rights resulting in reduced protections for these privately-owned properties. Additionally, state laws preempt these policies, making them unenforceable. Knowing these things and pushing the revised goals forward through the draft process demonstrates the inability of the citizens advisory committee to construct appropriate policy." And then I have one here from David Wells regarding the comprehensive plan update, Goal Four Forestlands. "Hello, my name is David Wells, and I am the chief forester with Oregon Natural Forestry, a forestry consulting business based in Tillamook that includes Clatsop County within my service providing area. Reviewing the draft version of Goal Four Forestlands for the Clatsop County Comprehensive Plan, I find there are many troubling statements. For instance, selective harvest should be encouraged over clear-cutting, page six. Forest access should be gated only where a clear and present danger to the forest can be shown. The forest should be a recreational resource for all, page six. When spraying herbicides, the maximum quality of chemical spray should be limited, not by the manufacturer, but by forestry department regulations, page seven. Off-road vehicles or beach should be strictly confined to established rock roads, page nine. These statements, some vague and others beyond purview of the agency, would put additional burdens on the private forest landowner. The statement that forest access should be gated only where a clear and present danger to the forest can be shown, and the forest should be a recreational resource for all, is especially troubling seeing how some treat the forest using it as a garbage dump, etc. These statements are describing a community's access to private land after all. In my work as a consulting forester, I find that my clients have a diverse set of values and ways they choose to manage their forest land. The Oregon Forest Practices Act does set a standard for forest practices in Oregon, regulating harvest, requiring reforestation, and protecting water. Adding additional constraints to the forest owner works to be an incentive to practice good forest management and care for the land. I am asking that the Goal Four portion of the comprehensive plan receive additional review with a diverse group of stakeholders to revise the draft statements to align with the Oregon Forest Practices Act and Oregon planning laws." And then I have two letters that were submitted. Both are very lengthy, so I will be reading the first and last paragraph of these letters, and they both will be entered into the record, and they have already been forwarded on to the Board of Commissioners. The first one's from Oregon Forest and Industries Council, Mike Eliason. He's the general counsel and director of government affairs. "Thank you for the opportunity to express the Oregon Forest and Industries Council comments on the ongoing process to update the Clatsop County Comprehensive Plan, specifically Goal Four, which addresses forest lands. OFIC represents over 50 large forestland owners and wood products manufacturers in Oregon who provides over 60,000 family wage jobs. Of the nearly 30 million acres of forestland in Oregon, OFIC members are responsible for managing over 6 million of those acres. Our members have a considerable presence in Clatsop County and take pride in providing economic and social support to the local communities. With that in mind, we have reviewed the draft Goal Four language and have significant concerns that the updated text is, in many instances, far outside the scope of land use planning and also explicitly preempted by the Oregon Forest Practices Act. In closing, we thank you for the opportunity to comment and encourage the Board of Commissioners, planning and staff, and legal counsel to take a closer look at the draft language and ensure that the final product meets the high standards necessary of a county comprehensive plan and with respect to Goal Four, conforms to current law. This will help ensure the county does not engage in wasting vital resources and staff time defending language that could have easily been addressed at an earlier stage. Clatsop County has a bright future ahead of it, and the forest products industry intends to remain a fixture in the county, providing family wage jobs and community support for decades to come." And this next one is from Doug Cooper, who's the vice president of resources at Hampton Lumber. "Please accept this feedback from Hampton Lumber on Clatsop County's comprehensive plan update for Goal Four Forestlands. As you know, Hampton owns and operates roughly 30,000 acres of timberland in Clatsop County, most of which is located near the community of Napa. As a thowmill operator, we also depend on timber sales from Clatsop State Forest and surrounding privately-owned forestlands to supply raw materials for local lumber manufacturing. As the members of the citizen advisory committees are not elected officials, it is the Board of Commissioners that is ultimately accountable for ensuring the plan update is accurate and inclusive. As the document currently reflects a poor understanding of land use laws, the Oregon Forest Practices Act, and existing forestland use and management, we highly recommend county staff review the accuracy, appropriateness, and legality of the content of Goal Four. As currently written, the comprehensive plan would assuredly solicit legal challenges at considerable expense to the county. I would also suggest the Board of Commissioners carefully review the process that has informed development of this document to ensure that going forward, public engagement is transparent, inclusive, and responsive to the county's diverse stakeholder group." That's the end of the written comment.
Thank you, Teresa. And just to repeat, these letters in their entirety will be published with them the minutes of this meeting, and so, they will be available to the public to read, and also, all the county commissioners have gotten a copy of that. So, clerk of the board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
No, there are not.
Okay. Thank you so much, and we will now close the business from the public and go to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, Chair Sullivan, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Webb. So, we have a motion to approve it and second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have three ayes, so that's what we need. Thank you so much. Let's move on to the commissioner liaison reports. And I see two commissioners looking down right now, so I'm going to pick, oh, there's Pam. I mean, Commissioner Webb, you looked up first, you get to go first.
Um, I, um, somebody helped me out with my memory here. We have recently learned that, and I guess it has been since our last meeting, that the development in Warrenton, that we have been calling Chelsea Gardens, which is 42 units of supported housing in both one, two, and three-bedroom units. We're very pleased about it. And we are going to, in addition to this, the developer has offered to purchase an adjoining piece of property that we might be able an adjoining piece of property that we might be able to, if we can get our stuff together really fast, apply for some kind of a grant or a loan to create a child... childcare facility on-site. This is gonna be a super development. It really is. It's on a beautiful piece of land, very close to jobs and public transit. It's, we're gonna have room for community gardens, for playgrounds, et cetera. So we got, uh, we were one of eight applications and they funded three. And this was, was one of the best-written applications I've ever seen for such a development. So I feel real good about the partnership that's developing it.
Commissioner Webb, may I ask for clarification? When you say "we," who is "we"?
I'm sorry. "We" being... Well, ultimately, this property will be managed by NOAA, by the Northwest Housing Authority.
And, and, but currently, it's a private developer that's, that's doing this?
Well, they're actually, it's, it's, it's a, it is a pair of people from Walsh Construction, which if you're familiar with the Portland area, they're one of the biggest, they're actually one of the biggest construction companies in the state. And they have, they are now into affordable housing, and this is, this is their, the arm of their company that's doing this.
But it's not specifically the Clatsop County government? It's not the Clatsop County government?
All of a sudden, you're not going, you're not very loud.
I, I'm just clarifying that it's not the Clatsop County government specifically that's doing this.
No, it's not, because the, uh, the other issue that I can report is that, you know, there used to be a Clatsop County Housing Authority that we are trying very hard to dissolve in order to have NOAA take over the ownership of all of those former properties. We are now down to one, um, one building, the Owens and Air Apartments. Uh, and, um, where I have actually told the NOAA board that we have to, this, this building needs significant alterations to it. And I have told them that we will not vote to do that until they transfer the title from us to them. So, um, I'll then ask them to put a priority on you. I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback. I don't... Is it me?
You're, you're, you're just going a little bit into the weeds, a little bit, Commissioner Webb. So I just, uh...
Commissioner Sullivan, you're sounding really muffled.
Yeah, I think...
I, I, I will, I will call in. Commissioner Webb, do you have something else that you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Nebiker, you're next, and I will try to take care of my sound problem.
Okay, thank you. So I understand Stuart Evans is the architect, and he's been working on this for a very long time, for this project. And I'm really happy that it has, it's coming to fruition. That's wonderful. We certainly need it. And maybe this will help solve some of our housing problems. And I know that there is a development going in, in the Clatsop Plains area. I don't know for sure, but I know people who are good friends with the developer, and supposedly, these will be homes that will be for rent. So if they can manage to swing that, that would be, that would be very helpful as well. I don't know if the county manager knows anything about that particular development. It's, okay. I know it's, they've been working the road.
Yeah, I have heard about it, but I don't know any of the details, but, but we can certainly find out more.
Okay. Harry Hinky, I believe, is the developer. Okay, I, I attended the Human Services Advisory Council, and there was a presentation by Jill Quackenbush and Stephen Blakeslee from OHSU. It was on CHART. CHART is a health promotion team, community, it stands for Community Health Advocacy and Resource Team for the North Coast. Now, CHART's been around for about 10 years, and I guess there were lots of other entities involved, but only the North Coast has stayed. And they do good work. They work on social services, and they work with parks people to collaborate network for, they do brainstorming. They, and they work through a, a health pyramid, including counseling and education, socioeconomic factors, long-lasting protective interventions. In 2010, it started with the Healthy Community Grant. There already said, yeah, there were 22 counties, and only Clatsop continued. So the trail map, you might remember that, that wonderful trail map that Stephen brought before the commission. That's, that was their doing. Also Cooking Matters and Food Bank, and the Walking 2,000 Miles Program, Women in Nutrition, Find Your Park, Activities in Parks, Nutrition Consortium, The Tobacco Retail Licensor, Trauma-Informed Education, and now they're pivoting to work on equity. And prior to CHART, they, these, they were silos. People working in their own specific areas, but CHART has broken down these silos and created beneficial outcomes. Oh, OHSU, DHS, Coastal Family Hospitals, Harbor and Disability Services are among those who attend these meetings. Let's see, what else was there? Oh, they're using, uh, OHSU is conducting a study that will help track and better understand through data COVID-19 in Oregon, like how many people have the virus, see patterns in the spread, use data to keep Oregon safe and contain infections. The participants, uh, it'll take about 10 minutes each day, and they get free tests and help with navigating if they contract the virus. There's 100 OHSU researchers, researchers involved, as well as the governor's office. Amy Baker is working on an initiative to reach out to the Latinx community. A bilingual therapist has been hired. A FEMA grant has been applied for, to provide psychological curbside counseling with outreach. And I don't know how our county is doing, but I did read a report that we've got record cases of teen suicide and overdoses during this time, so curbside counseling sounds good to me. Then I attended the Public Safety Coordinating Council. Sheriff Phillips reported that Community Corrections will hire a new person. There were over 45 applicants. Also, a new sex offender treatment person has been hired. Stephen Powell used to do that, I believe, and he retired. There is a higher-than-normal number of people applying for these jobs, and generally, they have high education levels and experience, so that's good for us. Maybe they want to move out of the cities. The jail has had to do some rebidding to keep within their budget. The medical examiner has retired in July, set records in the state of 24, well, and 24 deaths in Clatsop. That's a record. And an even uptick in accidental, uh, accidental deaths. And less than 24 hours in the hospital. Uh, let's see. I think there's a master clinician for emergency calls that we now have. I think, maybe I'm a little confused about that. I'll skip that. The harbor is very busy, a little understaffed, but they were awarded a grant to do a sexual assault study for prevention, and especially in the rural schools. Also, a grant to help youth with, um, by hiring a prevention coordinator. It's my, it's always been my belief, and I've strongly supported this, that if we can get to young people, the younger the better, and prevent these problems from happening, the outcomes are better. It saves taxpayer money, it's easier on staff. Education for youth is vital in how to conduct themselves and how to avoid pitfalls that, that bring them into harm's way. CBH is doing a mix of telehealth and in-person. Oh, they're also working on Family Find. This is a program that's, a project that's starting to take off. Children without love and support do not do well. I think we all know that. What this program does is they partner with children in foster care, and they look for, they research, find extended family members of these children who are willing to care about the child, either keep connected with them or have them move in with them. That's, that's, it sounds like a wonderful program to me. A lead juvenile counselor has been selected to better help with coordination with schools and prevention before the youth come to the attention of law enforcement. And that's it? Oh, no? There's more. 800,000 needles have been exchanged since the start of the program. And 110 lives have been saved with naloxone. And there's a syphilis outbreak. Okay, I'm done.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Is this, is this better? Can everybody hear me? Okay, so I'm Commissioner Sullivan, and the chair, and this is my commission report. First of all, I will start with where Commissioner Nebiker left off in that on our consent calendar today, I think it reflects so much good work that our county does on a regular basis. And one of them addresses the Harm Reduction Program, a grant that was given to continue this. And I just wanted to give a, um, a shout-out to Dr. McNichol, the Community Health Director, and his staff and the volunteers that helped run this program and, um, you know, to help keep, uh, improve safety and, and health and, and reduce suffering. And, and I, I just want to thank him for that. I also wanted to, um, the, the, the Girl Scout getting the Mary Blake Playhouse, that transaction, I'm very happy about that. The Girl Scouts, of course, are just a wonderful organization. And, um, and I, I love the fact that it's named after Mary Blake, who is such a longtime community leader. I'm really pleased with that. And then I also wanted to talk about the Warrenton-Hammond School District deal with leasing land from our beloved Camp Kualong. You know, that, that has been such a longstanding, um, uh, uh, community resource that serves a multiple use of, of, of the population here. And, um, and it also shows, I think it's, it's a good example of how we will be using public-private partnership going forward. We have, we have a lot of challenges ahead, and we need to, we need to use all the resources in a, in a creative way. And this is, this is wonderful, this is a wonderful, um, um, use of, of, of that. So with that, and then Commissioner Webb, I, I was gonna prompt you, because I, I imagine that you may have done this. I was scheduled to be on the town hall call with US Representative, Congresswoman Bonamici today, and I, and I missed that call. But I'm just really happy that our US representatives continue to reach out to our community and, um, and tell us how it's going and how they're working for us on a national level to bring such needed funds to our local communities. Because none of us can do it alone. We, we need help, not only from the state level, but, but from the national level. And I appreciate them being out there and working their hardest to, to bring us those, that funding. And on another realm, just kind of a segue, I would like to encourage the commission to consider the idea, county manager has brought this up about a youth advisory board. And I, I would like to, perhaps we can get started thinking about that, maybe get a work session somewhere. And I applaud our county manager for trying to include, to look, to look holistically at our community and to include young people, and, and to invite them into our, um, our, our former gover, not a former government, to, to, into the county, county government to, and, and we, we haven't defined all of that, but I'm really excited to get started on that as soon as we can. And so I just want to encourage the, the other commissioners to think about that. And when we get a chance to get a work session, and I'm, I'm, I'm already percolating with ideas and thinking about what we can do. So as a former teacher, um, I'm just, I'm just, I'm really looking forward to working with young people again. I miss them. So, um, so that's one thing. And then for my role as the Clatsop County Forest Representative for the Forest Trust Lands Advisory Committee, as you know, as I've reported before, there has, there have, we have not had meetings with the Forest Trust Land Advisory Committee. And the state forester, Peter Doherty, sent out a, a letter to all the county commissioners, it was, I believe it was in July, expressing encouragement for people to get involved and to, and to connect on the issues that the Forest Trust Land Advisory Board is considering. And one of the big issues that's coming up is the Habitat Conservation Plan and also the Forest Management Plan. And they've been, and, and they've been working on that for a number of years. And so that process is continuing. And as a result of, of, what's happening right now is on Friday, it starts at 9:30, there is going to be a meeting of all of the commissioners, all of the commissioners of the 15 Forest Trust Land Counties have been invited, and there will be a panel discussion. And it will be through the Council Forest Trust Land Committee, which is the portion from the Association of Oregon Counties. And as you know, at the, each year, we, we have a meeting in the AOC Annual Conference. And so that body is calling together all the commissioners to listen to this presentation. And it is, there will not be public comment. There will be a half an hour opportunity for commissioners from all 15 counties to have a statement. But if you're interested, you can, I think it's, um, I'm sure, I, I don't have it with me, but there's, there's a link that the public can get on the streaming and listen to the entire thing. And I encourage the commissioners to call in and be a part of that. And so I'm, I'm interested in hearing what the, what the discussion is, and, and we'll see what that is going forward. So, um, I think that's all for me today. And I, I will hand this off to our county manager. Oh, oh, one more thing. I wanted to, we just had a work session, but I really wanted to thank, uh, not only the county staff, but specifically Gail Hendrickson and her staff in the community development. They are just doing heroic work in terms of the strategic plan. I think it's an exciting time, and, and we need to do all we can to invite all of the public to, to, to get involved, give us comments, volunteer for these boards. This, we are shaping tomorrow's future right now. So I, I really want to thank them, and I also want to thank the Planning Commission that do the work that they do. that do the work that they do. So with that, I, I will now pass it on to County Manager Don Booth. Thank you.
Chair Sullivan, members of the board. Well, as you know from my Friday updates, there's a lot going on at the county, so we're not short on a lot of work. But for this evening, I'm just gonna keep it pretty brief to just remind the board and the public that tomorrow night will be the first virtual meeting for the Public Works Resiliency Project, and that will be at 5:30. And all the meeting information is on the county website, so you can go on and register, and then you'll re, receive a, a link to the meeting. So I want to thank the Public Works staff, Monica, for her work, and all the other staff, Gail, as well, as you can tell, just the number of times we've mentioned Gail's name, she is multitasking on a lot of different things, so, which we all are. So thanks for really everybody's efforts. And then the other is just to let folks know that on the 26th of August, ODF will be presenting and taking questions as part of the regular board meeting on a number of, of topics that are related to the state forest management. So just so the public and the board knows that as well, and that's all that I have.
Thank you, County Manager. I appreciate that. And let us now move on to the business agenda. And this is number 10 on our agenda, and it is on page 184. It's the Adopt Proposed Fee Schedule for Public Health Services and Assessment and Taxation Services to be implemented on August 13th, 2020, which would be tomorrow. And who will be giving, I, I think our Assistant Manager, Monica Steele, will be giving us a report on that. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Commissioner. So as you're all aware, we came before the board at the, in June, for the countywide fee schedule, and there were a lot of changes because we had staff kind of go through and do, it had been about six years since we had done a detailed analysis on some of our fees. And in that process, there were two departments that accidentally overlooked a couple things. What is happening in the Assessment and Tax Fee Schedule is there are no changes in the fees, it's just a change of title in the name. And so on your packet, or in your packet on page 188, there was what was previously called an Enterprise Zone Application Fee and a, and an Application Fee for Special Org. Those are now called Processing Fees. So it's just a title change. In the public health fees, there were some changes. One of them was a, a fee for two or more days for restaurant licenses, and so this is more for, for events, such as, you know, if you're going to a fair or a festival, and they have food vendors there. So previously it was a one-day event, and now they have a permit for two or more days. And the reason for the increase is because there are times that they might have to go back on those days, more than just the one, one visit. And then there were also some fees in regards to the, sorry, trying to find my page, in regards to the onsite septic system, and this has to do with, there are, there are fees that we have to pass through to DEQ, and those were not reflected on the schedule. And then also, just again, when they were reviewing the staff time and the materials for the cost of the service, so there were increases there as well. So at this time, we're asking that the board just allow for public comment, and then based on the public comment, if they could then choose to either adopt the schedule as proposed or make any adjustments. I'm available for questions.
Okay, Assistant Manager, I, I have a question. When you say adopt, I, I'm, I'm sorry, it's not on my, my script here. When we invite public comment, will be, we be inviting public comment today?
Yes, yeah. This isn't a public here.
And then making the motion today? Okay.
To allow for public comment. And then, once you receive the public comment, then you, you make a motion to adopt the fee schedule as proposed, or with any changes that you would like to propose.
Do I ask for the commissioners if they have a question of, of staff first?
Yes.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have a question for the staff? Okay, I just wanted to make a comment. I've made this before, but I want to stress the fact that, that the fees that the county raises, these are very thoughtfully done, and they are done in order to cover our costs. And, and so I just, I want to make sure that that's clear, that, that, that's the reason that we're, we're covering costs, because we, we need to have our costs covered in order to ensure that we continue these essential services that we offer. Isn't that correct, County, Assistant County Manager?
That is, and when we went through the last go-around, when we did the countywide fee schedule, there were, there were increases, but then there were also fees that got eliminated, simply because with technology, the way that it is in some instances, it, it just makes things much more efficient, and so things can be done online. And so we try to make those opportunities available for the public, if possible. And so, yeah, if government is not in it to make money, we simply are trying to cover the costs to provide the service.
And if I may, I, I had a conversation with Jim Gardner, our IT Director, and if you could just take a, just a moment, Assistant Manager Monica Steele, something is, like the, the, the title search, that there, there is, there is unseen background to that, where the public, we've been very good at, they can click on something, but could you just take a moment and explain all the things that go beyond, behind the scenes, that allows something like that to happen?
Sure, so there's regular updating, and it's, it's work that happens from multiple departments, and so Assessment and Taxation, the Clerk's Records Office, and then IT, all do things on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis to make sure that that information is updated. And so while there's, while there's ease of which people can access that information, it doesn't mean that there isn't work that's happening on a regular basis to make sure that that information is updated, so that they can just download it from the internet.
And there's also cost to the, the system itself.
Yeah, so, thank you. Yeah, so, so, so when we create these fees, what we're doing is, we're taking into account the cost of the staff time, and then the cost of the materials and services. And so in some instances, there's, there's, like with, with IT, there's servers that we have to make sure that we are maintaining, and then in some instances, there's cloud-based programs that we have to pay fees ourself to be able to, to have access to. And so, so when we're, when we're looking at the fees, we're taking all of those things into consideration. So this last go-around, what staff did, and it was based on the fee schedule work that we had done approximately six years ago, is we, we have staff look at the amount of time that it takes to conduct the work. So in some instances, it might just be a quarter of an hour, in some instances, it might be a half an hour. So then we take the fully loaded cost of the employee who, the position that typically does that work, and then we, we take that into account when we're, when we're creating those costs, in addition, any known materials and services. And so in some instances, when you're looking at the fee schedule, there isn't, isn't, isn't an amount listed, it says actual cost, because in some of these things, we can't predict the amount of time that it's gonna take. And the reason why we have these fees is because these are direct services that a person is specifically asking for. So a lot of the services that we provide, it is, is something to the benefit of every citizen within Clatsa County. But then, but then there are services that not every citizen is necessarily using, and so if I want to go in and do a title search, that's not something that all citizens are using, and so we don't want to charge all citizens for that service. So therefore, we charge fees for these specific services, kind of like in On-Site Septic and in the Building Codes Division, the people who are benefiting from that specific service at that time are who are paying the fees for that service.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's a very thorough and, and informative explanation, so thank you. Are there any, let's, let's now ask if there are any public comments concerning this, these fee adjustments? Okay, hearing no public comments, I will, I will entertain a motion. The motion that I have in front of me for you to consider is, I move that the board adopt the proposed fee schedule. Oh, I see, Commissioner Webb, are you, are you on that?
No, because I was gonna ask for what the motion needed to be.
Yeah, I would mo, I don't know if I can as a chair, so I'm gonna read you the motion and then, oh, Commissioner Neberker. She's ready to step up. Okay, you go ahead.
Okay, I move that the board adopts the proposed fee schedule to be implemented effective August 13th, 2020, as presented.
Do I have a second for that?
I second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, the motion in front of us is I move that the board adopt the proposed fee schedule to be implemented effective August 13th, 2020, as presented. Clerk of the Board, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Neberker, did you have something to add?
I, I just wanted to thank the staff and the chair for clarifying why these fee schedule changes occur. We think it's important for the public to understand, and I know that there has been some negative comments about this, but I think it was because people didn't understand. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Neberker. Okay, Clerk of the Board?
Yes, Commissioner Neberker?
Yes.
Commissioner Webb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, the, the motion to, to, to adopt the new fee schedule and make it effective August 13th, 2020, has passed unanimously. Thank you. We are now down to, I believe, the, the good of the order. Is that correct? For some reason, my script got piled under some other piles, so.
Yes.
Anything good for the order? Okay, I want to thank everyone for being here today. I want to thank everyone who submitted public comments, and I appreciate your involvement in our, in our democracy here, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.